The 2019 Citywide Business Plan was adopted last fall with very few changes as we allowed the incoming council to become situated, so to speak. This 2020 version will give us the ability to set the tone and the direction for the city for the next few years. So we are here today to get the mayor and council's input on the major goal areas and associated objectives. Following today's discussion, department directors will convene and review the revisions made and then identify strategies to meet the various objectives. Ideally, these strategies will filter down to the strategic plans of departments and divisions and will result in action plans outlined in the annual performance evaluations of staff. This way, we ensure that we are making progress consistent with the direction that the mayor and council gives us on today. So this meeting will be facilitated by Ellen Belzer, who is to my right, and Kitty Stephens, who is to my left. They are both members of the Finance Department. They are here to guide the discussion and ensure that the plan ultimately reflects the decisions that are made here today. They will also lead the department director's work later this month and will compile the results for presentation back to the council later this year. I and the staff are here today. We are ready to answer questions and provide information as needed. We very much appreciate your attention to this very important work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ellen, who will jumpstart our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here with you. Some of you may have heard of Peter Vale. He is the country's, one of the country's most preeminent influential organizational development theorists. And he's the one who came up with the metaphor "permanent whitewater." And that's why you see the picture depicted on the slide, on this PowerPoint. If any of you, like I, have been whitewater rafting in the past, the wildest ride I ever had was called a Class V or a Class V+. And I think you would all agree with me that we are now in an era where we're having Class V permanent whitewater. And so that's what you're going to do with this plan today. You're going to help us navigate through these turbulent and uncertain times. And you're going to do that by building a roadmap. This is your all's plan. This is the first time this particular council has had the opportunity to weigh in on this plan. Some of you have been here to help us shape the plan that preceded the one you're creating today. And so we are going to give you some context for that when Kitty makes a presentation. But for right now, I want to say this is a four-year plan from 2020 to 2023. And so think about the kinds of things you want to do within the next four years. You will see that there are many staff members present here. They are not here to participate except when you call upon a certain staff member to give clarification on an issue. They're here to serve as resources. But council members, this is your meeting. We do have on the agenda that a 10- to 15-minute break would be possible during the midst of the meeting. However, since we did get started a bit late, I'll check with you all to see if you're going to need a break or if you'd like to power through. I'd like to point out this next slide. This is what our session today is going to look like. We've only been scheduled for three hours. We've got about two and a half hours left. You'll see there's just a little bit of time for the introduction. That's what we're doing now. Then we're going to talk about the vision, mission, and values. And as you'll see, we're going to skate over that because that's going to be your homework assignment. And then we're going to spend a little bit of time on the goals, but the lion's share of this meeting will be about the objectives. Or think of that as your priorities. And we're not going to have you wordsmith. We're going to do that for you. We're going to get the gist of your ideas, what you consider to be priorities. We'll help you word it, and you'll have a chance to edit that later. And for now, to put this into context, I'd like to introduce you to my colleague Kitty Stephens with the Finance Department's Office of Management and Budget. Kitty?
Thank you all again for being here. And I'm just going to do this pretty quickly, mostly because you've heard some of it before. But I just want to briefly review the hierarchy of the plan. Thought that might be beneficial as we're going forward to sort of remember how that functions. So the Citywide Business Plan, we often refer to as our blueprint for policy and financial decisions. And it is composed of three different components. There's the strategic plan, which is what we're focusing on today. And that includes mission, vision, values, goals, objectives, and strategies, much like any other strategic plan you'd have in any other organization. There's also the financial strategic plan and the five-year planning model, which you're becoming more familiar with as we are looking at what the five-years might look like based on our current financial situation. But again, that's not what we're going to be talking about today. We'll be focusing on the city strategic plan, which is a four-year plan. And we are coming up to the end of that in October. We have what we refer to in our office as a circle of life. And it is this constant process that we're going through, which is analyzing trends, doing this where we're assessing the council priorities, looking at the departmental strategic plans. We submit and adopt the business plan, and then we submit it and we use what we've done in that strategic plan to help inform the budget. In the past, we have had two distinctive times. Not sure what that's... All right. Touch it and it goes away. We have had two distinct points where we engage the public, and those have been in our resident work sessions, which, when we go out and talk about what resident priorities are for the Citywide Business Plan. And then we have those public budget hearings that you all just participated in when we submitted the budget and then before we adopted it. As we are all learning in these times, we are having to sort of change the way we do business. And so we are hoping that going forward, we can start to embrace some of these more virtual avenues for engaging the public, maybe diversify how we do that sort of public engagement so that the entire circle of life is a public process, not just two distinct points of that. So the current plan has seven goals, and we'll talk about those a little bit more later. These are the general areas in which we are doing work. It's customer service and communication, finance and governance, housing, neighborhoods, planning, zoning, economic development, public safety, transportation, and infrastructure. And then those goals sort of sit at the top of that hierarchy. And that's one of the things that we're going to work on today is what are those main areas we're going to want to focus on? The next level of that hierarchy are the objectives, and what we're really referring to here is priorities, right? So where do we think that we can move the needle in a positive direction over the course of four years? What are those areas? So in our example, the goal is neighborhoods and healthy communities. The objective would be to promote a clean community. And then beneath that are strategies, which are really the checklist, the to-do list of programmatically, what projects are we going to be able to do that help move the needles on those priority areas? Additionally, something to keep in mind is that all of these objectives or priorities have measures of success tied to them. So we want to make sure that these things not only last the duration of the plan but are also measurable in some way. And just to finish up here, a brief overview of what the next steps are. We have the council retreat today. Then throughout the month of July, we'll be gathering resident information to find out what their priorities are. We're going to be working, we've done some survey work already, and we will be working with city planning and development to sort of piggyback on some of the engagement that they're doing with the, on the precipice of their comprehensive plan, which I know you all know about. So we'll hope to get some of that input as we're moving along through the process. We will have a director's retreat on July 31st, and that won't necessarily be like it has been in the past with everybody in one room, but probably a series of virtual meetings where we kind of look lower down on the hierarchy at some of those programmatic things that we can be doing to accomplish your priorities. We aim to submit the Citywide Business Plan and have a presentation at Business Session on September 17th, which will be followed by committee presentations where we can work with you on, sort of show you what the changes that have been made. There will probably be some interaction between all of us before then. It will culminate in committee presentations on October 23rd. I think that'll be the last day we present. And we will need to adopt the Citywide Business Plan by October 29th because we are required to do so by November 1st. So that is the last date that we will be able to adopt the plan. And with that, I think we're going to get started. I'll pass it back over to Ellen.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Kitty about the process? Okay. Just a reminder, a quick reminder, you've all been through this before, and who besides you all knows more about consensus? But I just want to reiterate that consensus doesn't mean I love the idea, it's my favorite idea of all time. It means I can live with it. So if, just think of that, even if it's not your first choice, something that one of your colleagues recommends. In order to save time in this process, we felt pretty safe in assigning this to you all in between this meeting and the end of the month, and that is the values statement, the vision statement, and the mission statement. If you all have any suggested changes, we would like you to submit those to either Kitty or myself by July 31st. And let me tell you why we feel safe in doing this. That's because the vision, the mission, and the values are intended to be somewhat enduring statements. They're meant to last over time. And interestingly, when I was doing a Google search on strategic planning, I came across a company called Clearpoint Strategy, and they have an article called "Seven Mission Versus Vision Statement Examples in Government." And incidentally, the city of Kansas City, Missouri, our vision and mission statement are cited as exemplary for others to emulate. So in other words, you've got some solid statements. That doesn't mean you all can't weigh in and change them. You certainly can, but you don't have to do that. It's not an imperative. And we have information here for the viewing audience, those of you who are not present but you're watching this presentation. Feel free to look at the values, vision, and mission at our website at www.kcmo.gov. Go to the Finance Department link, then check on Office of Management and Budget, and then you can click on the Citywide Business Plan. Those of you who are here, you will see the vision, mission, and values as the appendices to your agenda. These are your goal statements. It's repetitive of what Kitty was just saying, but I want to explain that the goals, which we will review, are intended to be broad overarching statements. They are the umbrella over all of the priorities that you will list under those. Like the vision, mission, and values, these are intended to be somewhat enduring as well. We have seven of these goals. You can change them if you want to, if you feel that they don't reflect the current reality, but you do not have to change them. So in order to get through these, what I'm going to have you each do is I'm going to start with Councilwoman Robinson, if that's okay? And I'm going to have each of you round robin, we're going to go around, and each of you will read the goal that's before you. And then after you read it, please recommend whether you see any problems with it or if you feel that it still represents a solid goal for Kansas City, Missouri for the next four years. And so the reason we're doing this, we're saying it aloud, is so that the viewing audience can go over this with us. But we also want to hear your recommendations. If any of you feel uncomfortable about reading one of the goals, just say pass, and you don't have to do that. So Councilwoman Robinson, would you please go through and read this and let us know your recommendation?
Customer Service and Communication. To create an internal culture that focuses on the customer across all services provided by the city, supports essential internal and external communication, and fosters public engagement.
Do you see a need for any change in that statement? And you all will have a chance to weigh in on this as well.
I guess the only immediate reaction that I would have would be some sort of integration of making sure that we have a five-star customer service standard. So ensuring that we are elevating the need to create a quality experience.
Okay. And we can certainly do that. As I said before, we're not going to have you all wordsmith. We'll try to present the language for your approval. As you all know, it's easier to edit something that's already written out for you than to come up with the words from scratch. So do you all agree with Councilwoman Robinson's statement that we should add something about to, that we're going to elevate customer service to the five-star or world-class standard?
Yes, I agree with that.
And I can't see the screen. Who's speaking?
This is Councilwoman Parkshaw.
Okay.
Yes, I agree with that, too.
What'd she say?
She agrees with it.
Oh, is she? Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I have rock and roll ears that aren't working all the time. Okay, so I'm seeing agreement. Just so I can be sure, thumbs up, you all agree? Okay, we're going with that one. Thank you, Councilwoman. And now we'll go on to Councilman Ellington with Finance and Governance.
So you just read the goal, Finance and Governance?
Yeah, and then you'll give us a recommendation if you like it or want to recommend a change.
Yeah, I don't like it. How long do I have?
Five minutes.
I mean, humbly, we could start by putting me as Chair of Finance and Governance, and then half of the contracts that I have issues with wouldn't come out. And then also restructuring the way that we do our incentive deals and the long-term maintenance structure of financing, development, and then incentives. I don't think we do a good enough job calculating long-term trends, not just what's in front of us today.
Okay. Councilman, that would be one of your priorities. And so that's coming up very shortly. But this is the broad overarching statement. So if you might read that and let us know if you think this statement is a good umbrella for that, but we're not losing it. I made a big note to myself that we'll come back to that. Could you read this statement and let us know what you think of it?
Talking about the Finance and Government statement?
Yes.
We have a different statement.
The Finance and Governance Goal.
Oh, you're talking about to be transparent and employ best practices?
Right.
And government and management, and strengthen and expand, and make judicious use of Kansas City's economic resources to achieve and maintain solvency and build resilience.
Is that a good overarching statement for all of the items that will go under this category?
I would actually say no, because to strengthen and expand and to make judicious use of Kansas City's economic resources is kind of paradoxical, because to strengthen means to make stronger, right? But we would actually be talking about reworking economic incentives. So it wouldn't actually be expanding it. Judicious, I can go with, but I wouldn't actually have wrote that statement.
So your recommendation is to delete the word strengthen. So it would be expand and make judicious use of our resources.
Yeah, that would be cool, yeah.
Does the rest of the council agree with the recommendation to remove the word strengthen from this goal? To strengthen economic resources?
Well, we'd always want to strengthen our resources. That, over here. Oh. Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with us eliminating the word strengthen, because if you don't strengthen something, you either leave it the same or it gets weaker. And we don't want to weaken our economic, economic resources. So, no, I wouldn't agree with eliminating the word strengthen out of there.
Okay. Let me ask the council, first of all, are there any other objections to this particular goal? Yes?
So I would just say, somewhere in there, and I haven't read it, I'm sorry, I had to leave real quick. I would add the word accountability.
You would add the word what?
Accountability.
Accountability.
These are the people's dollars that we're using, and we act like they're ours. And I'm not saying we do, but you know what I mean? We can't just, like it's Heather's budget, right? So I think we need to be transparent, we need to be accountable, and be held accountable to employ the best practices in our government management of these resources.
Great, thank you.
So I don't really care whether you use the words strengthen, expand. I don't know what you would do to expand them. I mean, we're barely getting...
I think that means find more resources.
Well, but that's not what you're saying. You're saying strengthen, expand, and make judicious use of the resources. You didn't say to expand upon.
Okay.
I mean, I know you said we're not wordsmithing, but I can't help it, I'm a journalism major, so, I mean, it just happens.
Okay, I'm hearing three recommendations. One would be to remove the word strengthen. One would be to remove the word expand, and one would be to add accountability.
I don't know if I'm saying we can, we need to delete the word expand. I'm saying, don't use it in that sentence, use it in another way.
Okay.
You're not, I don't think your intent and the way it's written are the same in that sentence.
Okay.
I might add.
Let me find out if the rest of the council, how many of you agree that the word strengthen, as proposed by Councilman Ellington? How many believe that the word strengthen should be removed from this particular goal? Could I see thumbs up if you agree with him on that?
Are we asking if we...
If you believe that the word strengthen should be deleted.
And replaced with what?
And then just leave, we would leave, make judicious use of the city's economic resources. Or is there a proposal for another word other than strengthen? Yeah.
Go ahead, finish what you were saying.
I was just going to add that I, I'm ambivalent about strengthen. I think either/or isn't important to me. I do think judicious should be teamed with efficiently, judiciously and efficiently, because I think resources and efficiency are paramount in finance.
Okay. I have a proposal for you all. I've heard, oh, Councilman Venge?
Yeah, I would just say that you're dealing with a bunch of lawmakers here who are going to, I think, get wrapped around the axle about every single word and how, and this is not to...
Yeah, right, sure.
I mean, it really is, I really am attacking Councilman O'Neil over there directly, but just, I would say let's beware of that and that we're talking about general, big picture. This is policy, not ordinances, I guess. I just wanted to be careful to not get chewed into the words.
This is the framework. Councilwoman Holland, then I'm going to make a proposal for you all.
I guess, back to your earlier point that we aren't wordsmithing and we aren't doing, I guess my question to you is, I don't, I mean, if my colleague likes the word strengthen or doesn't, I'm not going to sit here and go, I don't care. I'm not, I don't, I don't, if we're going to, for the next three hours, if we're going to say, raise your hand if you like or don't like what so-and-so says, I'm not going to, I don't like to do that. I don't think that's right, because then it sounds like I don't like his word.
That's why I'm going to make this proposal. And my proposal is, I've got what your different points are, and I'm going to, if it's with your permission, I'm going to take this information, get together with the senior leadership of the Finance Department, and we'll come up with a goal that tries to incorporate these thoughts for your approval.
I'd rather that than me saying, no, I don't like Brandon's word.
I agree, I agree.
I'm not going to do that.
I got you. Okay, so we will work on that. Is that okay, Tammy Queen?
Yes.
And is that okay, Nick Sarpy? The Director and the Deputy Director say, yeah, we'll do it. Let's go to the next item. Councilman Fowler. Housing.
Yeah, let me get this all so I can make some degree of sense. Housing is to sustain the city's diverse housing for all income groups through strategic planning and well-designed developments with an emphasis on revitalizing aging neighborhoods. I generally agree with it, but I think we need to put something in there that we need to eliminate deficient housing.
Are there any other comments about this goal?
I think we'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councilman?
Councilman Roberts, you go first.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, just in terms of, with the strategic planning part, to elevate equity so that we're utilizing a lens of equity as we deal with housing.
And any other comment? Yes?
Yeah, in the same vein, I think this council has really talked more about affordable housing and, and safe and healthy housing more than really any other. So with equity has to come a discussion about affordable and safe, accessible, healthy housing as well. And so I think that this really pigeonholes us into one very specific thing, whereas we need to be talking about strengthening our housing stock, especially for our most vulnerable citizens. So I don't, I don't have the words for that, but I feel like that's been a consistent theme. We disagree on some of the particulars, but I think most of the council agrees. But I don't want to speak for everyone. I would just say that I think the best thing that we should look at.
Here's what I've heard, that we need to eliminate deficient housing, that that needs to be part of this, that we need affordable, safe, and healthy housing, particularly for our most vulnerable population, and to elevate equity as we deal with housing. With all that being said, here's what I'm going to do, if it's okay with you all. I'm going to talk to the leadership of our neighborhood and housing folks in the neighborhoods and community services department. Did I get the name of that right? Yep, is that right, John? And, and I'm going to get with them, and we're going to come up with some proposed wording that incorporates those desires. Any, yes?
I just, I think the emphasis, when you, when you say the emphasis on revitalizing aging neighborhoods, I agree with that, but I also, but I also think that low-income neighborhoods are vital, and the emphasis in all of our housing talks should be low-income housing and, to Eric's point, the, the mark, the, creating a larger market.
Okay, we'll add that in. And so we will be working on that, and we'll get back to you. Now we are on related topic, neighborhoods and healthy communities. And Councilwoman Lorr?
Neighborhoods and healthy communities. To support the development, maintenance, and revitalization of sustainable, stable, and healthy communities in which neighborhoods are safe and well-maintained, people have access to health care services and strategies in place to prevent injuries and illness, and the environment is protected. I can't think of anything else to add to that one.
Okay. Councilwoman Robinson, you had a comment?
I do think that we need to add a couple alls in here, which means that, and when you look at, to stable and healthy communities in which all...
Can you talk into your mic? Because we can't.
Oh, sorry. These glasses, these African lips, this is not working. Yes, okay. So, okay, so the, to support the development, maintenance, and revitalizations of sustainable, stable, and healthy communities in which all neighborhoods are safe and well-maintained, all people have access to health care services, and strategies are in place to prevent injury and illness, and, okay, yeah, so those two alls.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gotcha, thank you very much. Any other comments about this particular goal? Hearing none, we've got that taken care of. Now we're at PZNE, Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development. Councilwoman Hall?
Thank you. To develop a vibrant economy where there is opportunity for job creation, entrepreneurship, and growth, particularly in historically underdeveloped areas, all citizens have opportunities for creating wealth and prosperity, and visitors continue to consider Kansas City a desirable destination.
Okay. And your recommendation?
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm, go ahead, fine, I'm just thinking. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think that economic mobility would be important when we talk about the opportunity for job creation, that we insert that somewhere.
Okay.
Is...
And any other points that you all would like to bring up?
I would just ask if economic mobility would be in this objective, or if we would put that in the transportation infrastructure one?
Okay.
Because are you thinking mobility as in transportation, like access?
I was thinking about economic development, so in order for us to develop economically, when we think about it from a people-based, a people-based perspective... when we think about it from a people, people-based, a people-based perspective, the job creation, entrepreneurship, that's very individual-focused, so making sure that individuals are inclusive in thinking about how do we create the economic mobility for individuals.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so you're suggesting leave that in this particular goal, correct?
Yeah, that was my thought.
I was just clarifying.
But we can add it in transportation.
Okay. Yes?
I see the, the phrase historically underdeveloped, and I wonder if, and, and I, I'm okay with that, but I also wonder if there's a focus, should be a focus on historically disinvested communities in terms, and.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Sorry, sorry, these masks are.
Historic what?
Historically disinvested communities, maybe, and in thinking about how we achieve equity and provide economic mobility, the focus of development in, in historically disinvested communities, I believe should be a focus. And again, I won't speak for all of my colleagues here, but also just in, and this maybe is a theme throughout, but making sure that we're taking care of the neighborhoods we, we do have, and, and the residents who are already here paying taxes and making sure that they're well taken care of, and maybe that fits in here too, I'm not sure.
Okay. Any other comments about this goal? What I will do with your permission is that I'll consult with Jeff Williams and Diane Binkley from the City Planning and Development Department, and we'll come up with appropriate wording that takes these points into account. All right? Next item, Councilman O'Neill's, public safety.
Public safety, to protect Kansas City residents, visitors, and employees by providing comprehensive, high-quality public safety and public health services, including strategies to prevent or significantly reduce public safety and public health problems and threats in a timely manner. The only thing I see that's missing in there, from my perspective, is an emphasis on, on community involvement, or.
Engagement.
Engagement, yeah, that's the word I'm looking for. Quality, community engagement for public safety.
Emphasis on quality, community engagement. And anyone else have any other additions to this item or comments?
I have one, just to, where this says including strategies, we just need to include root causes to prevent.
Include what?
To address the root causes to prevent or significantly reduce public safety.
Gotcha. Got that down too. Anyone else have any other comments on this?
Can you repeat that? Because I didn't, I didn't quite hear.
She was saying that we need to include.
It am repeated, because I can't hear you.
She wants to include root causes, to, to address the root causes while preventing or significantly reducing. Okay. Those problems. And Councilwoman, I didn't mean to speak for you, I was just, a translator along the way. Okay. Our next item is transportation and infrastructure. This is our last goal. Who's next over here?
Councilwoman Boo.
Councilwoman Boo?
To improve the city's physical infrastructure with special attention to streets, curbs, sidewalks, and water sewer systems, and strengthen the multimodal transportation system in ways that enhance connectivity among neighborhoods, business centers, and cultural health recreational destinations.
And your recommendation?
I'm looking at you, Eric.
I do, I mean, I have thoughts, but I'll.
I'll defer to my colleague from the 4th District.
Okay.
Why does everyone seem to think I would have opinions on this one? I, I would just say overall, this seems very output-focused and not at all looking at the long-term impact of our decisions. Infrastructure should be seen as not an end in and of itself, but something to better prosperity in the future. I would say we need to be tagging health outcomes and economic mobility outcomes and, and equity, and, and racial and social justice. So I would just say that, like, that we're talking about very specific, like sidewalks and water and sewer systems, it seems very focused on just like building stuff, rather than what are the intended consequences of these decisions. So I don't have the words for it, I just think that this should be really refocused to be big picture and stitching transportation infrastructure's role in our future with all of the other goals as well. And I would say that's a constant theme throughout, but really talking about outcomes, in particular health and justice and equity.
Very good. Yes, Councilwoman?
So in this, I think we need to, we don't anywhere mention anything about our airport, and it is kind of a big transportation thing we are doing right now. So.
Okay.
What's that, how do we connect that with the infrastructure and the connectivity between the airport and the rest of the city? We've talked about it, but we haven't really done anything about it. So what's that gonna look like?
Okay, now, we, we have to consider, we do say strengthen the multimodal transportation system, so you could put in airport, you could put in the streetcar, or does that belong in the, in the priorities?
I don't know, but I'm just saying, multimodal to me means just the regular getting along, getting around town kind of thing. I don't take the airplane from the Northland to downtown, despite what people may think.
Okay.
You have your own private jet at City Hall?
It's not that far away. I know people think it's like Omaha, but it's not, so.
We do drive to Iowa for dinner.
But that's where we go for dinner. So I would just be, I would, I would ask for clarification. If, if what we're talking about in this, in this specific section is to Councilman Bunch's point, then fine, you may not want to put in airport, but if it is more global, let's talk about our infrastructure and transportation in the city, then I think we need to include something about aviation and the downtown airport.
Okay. If it's okay, what I'll do is I'll, oh, Councilman Fowler?
Well, one thing that I don't, one thing I don't see in here specifically, I mean, we talk about business centers, and maybe that covers it, but we don't have anything that I've been harping on for five years, and that is to link neighborhoods to job centers, because our, our current transportation system does a woefully poor job of doing that. When I read the word business centers, I think of someplace you go shopping, but I think, so if you were to expand it to say business and job centers, I think you got me covered.
Okay. When I talk, when I talk to.
Councilman, Councilman Bunch disagrees with me, so he's holding up his hand, I can tell.
No, I'm not, just, no, Councilman Fowler, I'm actually agreeing that that's the direction that I think, whether it's, you know, we could talk about the specific outcomes, but that's an outcome, that I think we need to be focusing on, like, like, the goal of transportation is to connect people to things, people to jobs. I don't see that in this, and, and I, I think it should be more general, not general, but rather than focusing on the individual modes of transportation, or sewers, or water infrastructure, or whatever, it's really what are the long-term goals of, and I think that that deserves a, another, you know, conversation in itself, to determine, like, is that the one, I particularly like that one that Councilman Fowler said, but the outcomes are important, that this just does not really hit on. So I would say challenge the, the departments who are in, in charge of this, to do a better job of connecting these things.
What I'll do is talk to the applicable departments, and we'll come up with some suggestions, but I hope that I can argue about the, the structure of a goal, that's something that we're gonna try to maintain the integrity of, and that is that the goal does need to be a broad statement, it's not specific, the specifics go in what you're talking about next, which are the objectives, your priorities. So the specifics are going to be addressed, this is just going to be a broad statement. But we will try to improve the language and present it to you for your approval. So thank you all for going through the goals, I think you did a marvelous job. I think personally, what I see is that you've truly reflected the views of this particular council, as opposed to your predecessors who designed the previous plan, so I think that's excellent work on these goals. I want to take just a second to tell you what we've done. You all received an email from me that was asking you to provide answers to three questions, and those questions were about, we asked you about the trends that you noticed, we asked you about the challenges and opportunities, and we asked you for information about priorities. We, we asked this of all the department directors, and we asked this of all the council members and the mayor. We heard from 12 of you all together, so, pardon me?
Sorry, I didn't even see that, I apologize.
I couldn't hear.
I just said, sorry, I didn't respond, I didn't even see that, I apologize.
Oh, okay. You know, it's, I'm not blaming anybody, because we're in the middle of a pandemic, we have, we've had protests, we've had a lot of things that, to deal with, and everybody is incredibly busy. But we had, the reason it's important that we did hear from some of you all is because we were able to take those items and figure out where people's feelings were, and we didn't lead you in the questions, we didn't say which items in public safety, or which items in PZNE, we just said which items in general do you consider to be challenges and opportunities and priorities. So the reason we wanted to find this in advance of the meeting is to help save time here, so that instead of mentioning every single thing that everybody can think of in these areas, we already had some things listed out. The items I'm gonna show you right now are the trends that people mentioned from the surveys that don't fit under any particular goal. These are just things that you might want to take into consideration as you develop your objectives. So the trends people noted is increase in population north of the river and downtown, you'll see the number three next to that, that means three of the respondents, three of the 12, said that very same thing. Changes in demographics, the median age, racial diversity, two people mentioned that. The increasing divide between the haves and the haves-nots, have-nots, and falling incomes. So those are the general trends. Here are the general challenges, opportunities, priorities, which I've lumped all together for, just because it's more readable. Decreasing segregation, the need to hire more Latinos at all levels of city government to keep the city progressive, to sustain the city's positive momentum and reputation, two people said that. Determine which basic services to provide, not to provide, increase our ability to react to any crisis, and create an equitable environment for all. So those are the general statements that would apply to all of the goals. We're gonna, I'm gonna show you the objectives, but first of all, here's what I want you to keep in mind during this next portion, which is highly interactive, and that is creating objectives. First of all, consider what you, what, consider your priorities as the first-tier items of importance to the city. Other items can be relegated to department and division plans, so this is not the only plan in the city. We, we also have the comprehensive plan, but we, there's all sorts of other places it could go if it's not a first-tier item. What I encourage you to do is to make your objectives as things that are new, different, or improved, not the things we do as a normal course of business. Don't say hire more staff or provide more money to, this is something we advise all the departments and divisions when we do their plans, because, let's face it, everybody would say this. Everybody would say hire more people and get, you know, provide more money for this particular effort. We're going to focus, we're gonna describe what the focus should be, these would be things we do to get those things done, but we're gonna try to describe the activity or the project or whatever, what the focus is, rather than the staff or the money. Feel free to retain or replace the existing objectives. It's best if we keep the number of objectives for each goal between four and six. And don't bother about wordsmithing, just give us the gist, and we'll suggest wording that you can amend later. So, I want to show you in the slides that follow, the things that are in the left-hand corner, or the left-hand side of the slides, are the current objectives put into plain English. And my colleague Kitty Stephens did a marvelous job doing that, so instead of seeing the lofty language that you'll see in the citywide business plan, you will see plain English what those areas of concern were from the last council that developed them. The other side of the slide will be the comments we received from the surveys. Now, it, it doesn't mean that you have to address every single one, it doesn't mean that anything you don't select will get lost, because we can always put that in another plan. It, it simply means that these are things to jog your thinking about objectives that you'd like to include. So here's customer service and communication, and Councilman Barnes, I'm gonna start with you here, and have you read through the items on the left, these are things from the current plan. These are the general objective areas.
Customer service and communication. Better, more consistent communication with staff and public, expanded resident engagement throughout the city, increased transparency, better internal and external customer service.
Okay, those are the general areas you've had before, and these, the, the items on the right-hand side, Councilman Bunch, are items that seem to me to be much more specific. So would you go through those, please?
Sure. Connect with communities that need more engagement, more emphasis on virtual meetings, interact with community in new ways, provide better and more modern tech tools and training to staff, greater inclusion of minority and low-income population in city policy development.
Okay. And also, Councilwoman Robinson, you were mentioning the need for five-star customer service. This would be, this would be a good place to make a point about that, about elevating that service. So what, what we're going to do is, I'm gonna ask you all for recommendations, and we will, what I'm going to do is list all of these, and you can, as you're reviewing the wording of the different plans, we can prioritize, perhaps via email or in another meeting. So let me have any ideas that you all have that you would like to see inserted in the customer service and communication goal.
Well, one of the things is, because in the overall goal, we talk about focusing on all customers, it's important for us to understand and define who those customers are, and what does that five-star standard look like to them as a strategy before we, or an objective before we can.
Okay.
Meet the need.
So focus on all customers, define who they are, and what five-star standards means to them. Let's see. Kitty, you were mentioning earlier the part about how we need to connect with the community in different ways, we need to use more of a virtual approach, but I want you all to know that our city for the last two years has had a resident engagement committee, we've changed the name to the Speakeasy Committee, to come up with novel ways to connect with the public. And Chris Hernandez has put our communication toolkit, our resident engagement Speakeasy toolkit, rather, on the internet so that we can all access it through MyKC, so we're hoping that that's an asset for the, for the community, or to help us connect better with the community. But think back also about what Kitty was saying about the need for more emphasis on virtual meetings and finding new ways to connect with the community. Anyone have any comments about that, or what you'd like to see? Are any of these items triggering some thoughts about what's most important in this area? Okay, then hearing none, we'll come up with some ideas for you about the language that you might want to include, and we'll check. might want to include, and we'll check certainly with our city communications office and with appropriate others. Let's now go to, this is a big one. And incidentally, you'll notice that we gave you two different handouts. One of them is the PowerPoints. The other one is the actual agenda. In the agenda, I'm holding this up, one that's on the white paper, you will see the full responses from those 12 surveys. So whereas it says on here that financial impact related to COVID-19, we had eight people saying that, you'll see their exact wording from their survey responses in this particular version. So the trends, Councilwoman Robinson, would you go through those, please?
Finance and governance trends.
Yeah.
Financial impact related to COVID-19, rising employee pensions and healthcare costs, wage gap.
Okay. And if any of you notice any other particular trends you'd like to make note of, please do.
Well, I think that this is kind of where I'm in solid agreement with my council colleague regarding economic development incentives and how those are applied through the policy lens that create inequitable outcomes. So how those economic development impacts over time are performing or not performing, and what the actual cost of that is to the city, if you will, and making sure that we're having that more historical data and information to make decisions. So just to uplift some of the comments that I heard earlier by Councilmember Ellington.
Could you clarify what you mean by more historical data? What kinds of data are you looking for?
And from my lens is that the mention, it was made, mention of that we're making decisions off of very short-term information, like what's before us now, but we need to make sure that we have a historical analysis of project performance. We need to make sure that we have more information about how former decisions are now impacting how we're distributing incentives today. The other thing is, has to do with our tipping point of economic development incentives, and how do we measure what that tipping point is so that we can make the best, we're not the same city we were 20 years ago.
Okay.
And so, you know, we don't have to bend over backwards to ask somebody to come to a dance, so, at this point. So just making sure that we're, we're assessing where we are today as a city, where we want to go, and what types and levels of incentives we want to apply to, to meet today's vision, not a vision of ourselves that we had 20 years ago.
Let's see. Councilman Ellington, I'm, this is where the items you were talking about earlier will truly fit in. But before we get to those, would you go through the items on the left-hand side? These are items-
Ms. Belzer.
Yes.
Ms. Belzer, yes.
How are we supposed to communicate with you if we want to rebut or talk or add? Do you just want us to interrupt?
Just interrupt.
Okay, all right. Just want to be respectful.
I'd like to think this, this is a little bit more informal than your usual sessions.
Okay. Well, we're in this very formal session for a council retreat, so.
Well, let's say-
Wait till Brandon starts.
Councilwoman Hall, let's say-
I'm going to get in before him.
Let's, let's say, interrupt, but respectfully.
Okay. Excuse me, I'd like to speak.
Please do.
All right. So to Councilwoman Robinson's comments, first of all, I'm in agreement with, we need to add in, I would, I would propose that the financial impact related to COVID on the trend for financing governments is important. I would also contend that incentive reform and what the impact is to everybody in our communities would be higher than the rising employee pension and healthcare costs, just because of the enormity of this problem that's been so long in the making. And so I would say a number of our colleagues have been working together kind of on two parallel paths until yesterday, and we've all been talking about how we can be more streamlined in incentives, incentive agencies, in reforming everybody who's working together in that, in that arena. But at the same time, being more strategic at the beginning with the over 30 taxing jurisdictions having a more prominent seat at the table with the developers, the development community in all parts of the city. And my colleagues in the, in the Northland, as well as in the middle of the city and the south part of the city have been talking the last few days, weeks about what does that look like and what are the financial implications? We're always trying to find ways to make money, yet we're giving away so much money that maybe, maybe we're having it in reverse. And so we need to really discuss what does that look like? And we don't think it's going to be a this-week answer. We think it's going to take a few months to come up with some answers, and we're working really diligently with our finance department. Thank you to Ms. Queen and her team have been extraordinary in answering questions that we didn't know we didn't even know how to ask, really. And some of us have been here for five years and been on planning and zoning and asking questions and, and wanting to know, where's the incentive? What does it do? What does it look like? And why is it different in different parts of the city based on different types of development? So I would say that while that sounds like it's in the planning and zoning, it has to start in the finance and governance first.
Gotcha.
And that's just a Heather Hall perspective. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm sure my colleagues will correct me if I am. And I would just say, I would put that as a higher priority, not that the others are not. They are vitally important. I, I don't think it's, I don't know that you, I know you didn't put these in order of importance. You put them in order of how many people said they were important. But I don't think any of them can be quantified on which is more or more important, but maybe some are more urgent because of what's going on, i.e. COVID. So that's where we are.
Very good. Any other comment before we move ahead? Okay, Councilman Ellington, tell us in these plain English topics that are currently in our plan.
So you want me to read the left side, right?
Right.
Increased cost savings inefficiencies, updated ordinances, policies, and procedures, increased resiliency, maintain or strengthen credit rating, reduce cost of workplace accidents and injuries.
Okay. And I know that tremendous progress has been made in each of those areas. And now, before we get to the specific objectives, Councilman Fowler, read the survey responses.
All right, and those are the ones on the left-hand side?
Right-hand side.
Okay. Need for a permanent city manager, increased proportion of city budget occupied by public safety, earnings tax renewal required every five years, ability to attract and retain talent within our organization, and rethinking how to do business post-pandemic.
Okay. So now let's talk just in general. If you want to respectfully interrupt one another, that's fine. And talk about some of the things that you think should be in this plan for the finance and governance. And don't forget, there's, there's those two aspects. One is the finance side, and the other is the governance side. So any comments? Councilman Ellington, can I have you go back to your previous points that you were making in that area?
I mean, you kind of heard it from both council members when we talk about calculating demographic data. The difference that I see on the local level is a lot of things is continuous. So they transpire past council terms, and that's just the nature of development, where it may take eight to 10 years to actually get something pre-approved, developed, and actually built. And coupling that with the city manager and the finance department and the council, I think we should be more strategic in understanding the economic incentives that are out there, the timeframe in which those economics, economic incentives either fall off or increase the liability on the city, depending on the type of incentive that we have. And I believe that would allow us to have a tighter finance and governance structure in which we're leveraging development that is here, and we're also leveraging demographic trends as opposed to just developing in silos, which should increase or lessen the amount of sprawl that we have, should increase density around the city, and should definitely diversify the tax base. That way, that way, not one segment or one community has a heavier tax burden than the other ones, and it increases beautification. And all of that can happen by coordinating the development projects that we have, because again, they supersede council terms. So we're talking about making sure the bureaucracy is actually following in sync with the council knowing what the bureaucracy has done prior, currently, and after their term.
I might ask the councilmen to take breaths between speeches. The woman's just writing.
I'm trying to get it to go fast.
He said bureaucracy like seven times, and you can just put it like to the seventh power up there.
I mean, because it's different between bureaucrats and elected officials and bureaucrats.
And that reminds me to thank Jessica and Sydney for helping us out with all, with the note-taking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also have some people taking, Amy and Michael, they're taking more copious notes. And we also have this recorded, so we're not losing a thing that you all are saying.
Please tell me you're going to also video it so you don't have to remember everything. Surely they can watch it backward if they want to retype.
Right, right. Okay, so thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Hall.
So I guess, I know these are overarching, what are we calling these again, our areas, our goal areas, but the goal areas, sometimes the items that are in the goal don't really fall in those in our departments. So if you'll know-
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
So what I'm noticing is some of our goal areas, our departments don't all fit in the goal area. So when I look at this, I don't really believe that ability to attract and retain talent within our organization falls under finance and governance. I think that falls under human resources and other kind, other departments. So my question is, why does that fall there? Is it because you don't have any other place to learn?
One of the survey respondents just put it in there. And, and, and when we were sorting things out, we just tried to put it in the appropriate category. So that would be my fault for putting-
Well, it's not a fault. It's just a question of, I don't believe that falls in that category personally.
Right, gotcha.
And right now, we're not attracting anybody because we're not hiring anybody. So I realize that's a COVID issue, and we have to talk regularly.
So tell me, tell me what you'd like to see in terms of finance and governance as one of our priorities.
Well, I think, first of all, we have to manage the budget within the confines of the money that we receive, right? So if I don't have money, I can't spend it. And if we don't have money, we can't spend it. So I think we have to do that. And I think that goes back to our original conversation of if we can understand and have a better understanding of our incentives and how we are giving money away, that's one issue. And then the other issue is how are we then spending the other money that we do have? And are we spending in the right areas? Because even though I believe every department is equally important, some are more important at different times of a cycle or a season than others because of an urgency that's going on in our community. Right now, public health, public safety are vitally important because of what's going on with COVID-19. Sometimes they're not as urgent as planning and development or public works. I mean, just a few months ago, all we could talk about were the potholes and public works, right? So that was a more urgent need, where maybe more money needed to be invested.
Right.
So even though we have a budget and we have five-year plans, sometimes we need to say, stop X, Y, and Z departments, you're important, but stop spending money right now because we need to divert it over to this department because this department's where it needs to go right now. It's not saying we want to let go, let people go, but what we just need to do is maybe renegotiate and be fluid every now and then as, as things hit.
And that's an excellent point that relates to being flexible to deal with the permanent whitewater as, as things keep changing. Very good. Is there anybody else that has any comment? Yes, Councilman Barnes?
Yeah. What, what context was the, the second bullet point, increasing portion of city budget occupied by public safety? Was that in the context of somebody saying, we need to increase the portion? Or was that someone questioning?
Let me turn, okay, you'll see that on page five of the agenda. We have the full comment. Let's see. Let me find it. Oh, it must be under, it's also on page six. Yeah, it just says, one of the challenges is the increasing proportion of the city's budget occupied by public safety.
That's kind of what I, so it wasn't, it wasn't someone making a statement around needing to increase-
They had that under, it was a challenge.
But one of the challenges is the fact that, yeah, okay.
Any other comments about finance and governance?
Ma'am, and what is your name?
Ellen.
Ellen, okay.
Or, oh, you wonderful person, you.
Okay, oh, you wonderful person, you. Around this finance and governance, and I think that this isn't, this goes across all of the departments and all of the areas here, but this is a concern, a concern that I would like to lift regarding ensuring that we have a team of, of professional management advice that's holistic, and that we don't get advice from city staff that is couched in a political frame. So I think it's really important that when we have information, that we have the full information, the impacts of that information, and that we are creating a culture of teamwork between the council and management staff so that everybody can work within and be empowered in their lanes to do what, you know, we're all called to do here, if you will.
Let me ask you a question. Do you think there's a need for more communication between, like more regular meetings?
No, I think it's a cultural issue.
Okay.
And I think that we really need to focus on how do we break that culture? And because I'm on finance and governance, I see a little bit more than these other places, but it's important for us to really hone in on, on how do we break that oppressive culture for staff that, you know, you have to be able to be free to give the information so that we can make the decisions that we need to make.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have a-
Other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if this is a proper time to input, input this, but I think I'm a, I'm a strong proponent in employees rather than outsourcing. So I'm, I'm wondering how to say it, but more emphasis on strong wages, strong benefits to employees rather than sending stuff out of the house so that people can pay lower wages and maintain no benefits and that type of thing. So just a higher emphasis on employees rather than outsourcing.
And thank you, said everyone who works for municipal government. Okay. Any other comment about finance and governance? I think we got the gist of your comments, and we will frame those into, oh, Mayor, welcome. It is wonderful to see you. I'm Ellen Belzer, your facilitator today. Feel free to take over the role of calling on your colleagues for this, but we would like you also to be an active participant in discussing these goals. We're just finishing up on the finance and governance goal, and do you have any recommendations on priorities? And also, is there anything, since we missed your opening comments, that you'd like to say to the group about this particular session?
Well, it's very good to see you again. I remember the last exercise that some of us had with you on this. I want to apologize to my colleagues for the delay. I was trying to catch up on this Department of Justice program, so had a long chat with the United States Attorney this morning and thought it was important enough that we try to figure it out. So was taking care of some of that this morning, and we'll have a further meeting on Monday to try to get more details on what's happening. So that's the only reason for the delay, and as you may know, sometimes they just call you when they do, and I couldn't schedule it better. In terms of this exercise, I certainly think it is an important and helpful one. I will just get caught up. Looking at kind of the finance and governance materials, this seems to be consistent with what we've been doing for some time, but certainly post-pandemic business changes will be key. I also have an issue with kind of our long- business changes will be key. I also have an issue with kind of our long-term trend lines, and how do we make sure that the trend line is in a way that's favorable to our taxpayers? I think we all understand going back to the taxpayers for more tax increases is something that we absolutely don't want to do. And so avoiding that, what can we do to see how we can do better? I might add one other thing in our responses, but litigation against the city, I mean, we talk about accidents and injuries. It's rare in open session we ever talk about lawsuits, but they do add up, both here and actually over at the Kansas City Police Department. And those are costs that eventually go on to the taxpayers. I would like to see what type of long-term mitigation strategies we have to make sure we're not incurring costs in those areas as well.
Okay. Mayor and the rest of the council, since the E-tax is going to be a big deal coming up, and people did mention that from the survey, are there any particular items you'd like to mention as a priority for getting the E-tax renewed? Because that will happen during the next four years, right?
It'll happen next spring, we hope.
There you go, okay.
It's so significant that it really would speak to lots of priorities. You know, I think that probably what has changed over the last 50-plus year experience with the earnings tax is that it did kind of go from funding a particular thing to being such an essential part of government. And I would think in how we message the earnings tax, we speak to part of a reason that things in Kansas City, Missouri, aren't worse as compared to some other local governments, is because of our diverse tax structure. And earnings tax is certainly an important part of it. And so I would actually probably just look to how vital it is to our general revenue each year.
Okay, so I'm assuming that you'd like this to be one of the priorities in your finance and governance goal, correct? Okay.
Well, and I think the important piece is that we do the things that we said we were going to do with the tax, which needs to overlap several of the goals, like transportation, infrastructure, public safety, those types of things, so that people are more confident in being able to support continuing to pay those-
Right, and builds trust as well.
Right.
Right. Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Hall?
Would you be willing, or someone in your department, be willing to share with us, from the last earnings tax election, what it was that we said we were going to use to spend that money for, so we could make sure we're keeping our promises?
Tammy gave you a thumbs up.
Thank you, Ms. McQueen, Ms. Queen.
Wonderful. Any other comment before we move on? I want to mention that if any of you feel that you need to have a break, let me know. And if not, we're just going to power through. All right. We're now on the topic of housing. And so I think Councilwoman Hall, we're ready for you to read about the trends.
Okay, trends. Issues between affordable, mixed-use, equitable housing, and the desire to move from more suburban, greenfield development. Rising house costs decrease in affordable housing stock. Home ownership decreasing, rentals increasing.
Okay, so any other trends you notice in housing?
The only thing I would add to go with that, and maybe this is something where we would put it in the little box with the red writing, is permit and codes and costs related to new builds. We're finding, I'll just give an example-
Wait, you said permits, codes, and costs for new builds?
And costs associated with new builds. Just, I'll give you an example. If you want to build a house in the Northland, before you can dig at all, put a shovel in the ground, it's a minimum of $50,000 in state, federal, and local funding for that person to get approval to build there. And you add all those things up, and it's really expensive. And so I think that's a challenge to the trends of building. We've been in some meetings, haven't we, Councilman O'Neill and Fowler in the Northland, where some of the developers are saying, "These are the costs that we have before we even put a shovel into the ground."
Okay.
That goes for wherever you build, it's expensive. So it's not a North Kansas, North Land problem, it's an everybody problem, because of all the permits and the requirements that they have to go through to build.
Okay. Got that. So we're already on that-
And that's a trend, that's a negative trend.
We're already on this slide, then, the housing. Councilman O'Neill, would you read the items on the left? That's currently in your, in your plan, and the items on the right are things that people mentioned relative to housing in the survey. You can read both of those.
Okay. Revitalized neighborhoods with housing rehabilitation and construction. Increased accessibility to diverse quality housing for all income groups. Improved housing conditions and livability.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the three others?
Please.
And these are responses to those?
These are, these are, on the left is what's currently in your plan, the plain English version that Kitty created. And the second category is the survey responses, that the 12 people-
So the portion of the survey includes affordable housing, parentheses, purchase utility and upkeep, affordable housing creation, creation of a city-funded housing trust fund.
Those were recommendations from the surveys. Anything ring a bell, or anything in particular about housing that you would like to see? Yes, Councilman?
I think, I think all my colleagues would agree that we have a serious problem with determining low-income housing and the different, the different rates, the AMIs that we have to deal with. And I think all of us agree to a certain degree, and I'm not speaking for anybody, but 80%, 60%, 50%, whatever you come up with, it seems like for low-income housing, it's very difficult to come up with a fair number on what low-income housing actually is. And so I guess, coming to a consensus on a, an actual, you know, not a $1,200 a month number as fair, you know, as low-income housing, but something that's literally a real low-income housing number.
Okay. Very good. Other comments about housing?
I have a comment over here.
I'm like a deer in the headlights. Go ahead.
I think also, it may not be specifically mentioned, but stabilization of some of our neighborhoods. So we have some that need to be revitalized, because the areas have deteriorated, but we need to ensure that some areas are stabilized, so they don't further deteriorate.
Okay, very good. Others? Yes, Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, and this goes back to my comment while we were going through this first time, is that what I've come to find the last five years is we've got low-income housing, but it's not fit for human habitability. So I'd like to see something written in here somewhere that says we aim to reduce the amount, I call it deficient housing, you call it unsanitary, unsafe, whatever word you want to use, or multiple words, that we need to focus on making sure we have livable housing. Because you can have cheap housing, but if, if it's, some of the stuff I've seen, it's not cheap. It's actually more expensive, because healthcare costs everything else.
So maybe that would require the development of criteria for what is considered livable?
Could be, yeah. We kind of have that in Healthy Homes ordinance.
Okay.
We just need to do a better job of getting out there and finding that stuff and getting it eliminated.
Gotcha.
And I had a couple of things here, that we have a creation of a housing trust fund. I think the city-funded part is a little nebulous, if you will, and so I think we need to think about diversifying city funding for housing, because our dependence upon federal resources for our housing plan is not sustainable. In a city of our size is quite unfortunate. But I think we need to make sure that we are looking at diversifying the city funding for housing. We need to also integrate some economic mobility to, for individuals to be able to attain housing. And then to earlier point, to add a bit of layering on to, how do we, we need an incentive strategy for housing. So while we might not, you know, agree on doing another study, but it needs to be defensible, whatever strategy we use. But we need to figure out how do we incentivize housing and keep those housing, the housing affordable, and-
Could you give me an example of incentivizing housing?
Yes, and some members that serve on the Housing Committee might be able to have the terminology down a little bit better. But to say, if you're going to provide, you know, low-income tax credits, or you're going to provide, "We're going to give you a city subsidy, we have the central city economic development sales tax, or people are getting millions of dollars of city funding, we're incentivizing those units," we need to make sure that we're not gentrifying the community and outpricing people that currently live there when we do that. But if someone wants to come in and do workforce housing, we have some standards in place that they have to follow before we're going to release taxpayer dollars to them to do that.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Hall?
So, again, I guess I would say, so much of the things we're talking about, if it's current housing, that's one thing, in the affordable housing area. But when we're talking about building and going forward, it would be, it would make sense to me that this would have an overlap, or if I'm drawing an org chart, I would move it over also into planning and development, because I think our land development and our planning department should have conversations with our housing department to talk about all this together, because when the upfront costs are so expensive, then how do you ever expect to have anything be affordable if you can't afford, if it's going to cost that much to build it to begin with? So I don't think these should be in silos. They should have lines drawn to them and together, and talking to each other before they do anything.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I might say that there are a few things that I'm thinking about, and this actually goes back to the trend line point. When I think about South Kansas City in particular, Southern Clay County, a few areas of the city, where we have a good housing stock, we want to make sure it remains a strong housing stock. We're getting reinvestment in neighborhoods where there still is good occupancy and levels and rates, but where we may be seeing turnover in population. I think actually having good planning long-term for what that might look like for us is key, and it's something that a lot of our inner-ring suburbs are doing already. North Kansas City, Prairie Village, Gladstone, I know have had efforts in that, Grandview, Raytown. I think we need to make sure that we're looking to do some of that same work. And so it's kind of part of the long-term neighborhood preservation conversation that's key. I also would argue that we need to, to Councilwoman Robinson's point, I can't see, but I know she's there, to her point, I would want us to really tie all housing-related incentive activities to housing policies. In my view, incentive work in the housing arena should be derivative to what is our housing policy. I want John Wood to approve everything, I guess, or reject it. But, I don't know, he's like, nah. But general view is that it needs to actually be part of some real plan. I think our incentive activity for multifamily housing in particular has been somewhat scattershot, at least since I showed up here in '15. And we need to align it more closely to where we're trying to stimulate development, neighborhoods, what type of development. And so that'll be the other thing. And then one other point, and I actually had a good conversation with Senator Hawley, of all folks, about this. And it is incentive activity around single-family housing. Almost all of our work in housing development does look to multifamily, because of scale, because of how the federal government provides us resources, et cetera. But a lot of families want to live in single-family housing units, and Lord knows, we have a lot of lots in Kansas City that we're looking to fill and develop. I think it would be helpful for us if we really spent time thinking about, in housing development or redevelopment, what does the single-family arena look like?
Okay. Other comments about housing? Thank you. You all have wonderful ideas. It's a great discussion. And also, don't forget that when you see this all put together, you'll have another opportunity to weigh in and prioritize. Now, we are at neighborhoods and healthy communities, and this is just so, there's only one trend that was listed in the surveys, population shift in the city from established neighborhoods to new neighborhoods in the Northland and downtown.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry to, I have a long-term goal of always thinking of neighborhoods and healthy communities and housing as one. I guess I might ask, why they're separate, and is there a way that we bring them together, or is there some policy reason why we should keep them apart?
To answer that, I think we need to call on someone from our audience. John Wood, would you come up, please?
It just bothers me not being able to see-
Don, the question is, why is neighborhoods and healthy communities separated from housing? Is that, did I state that correctly?
Well, I believe it's the policy of the former council. At one time, they were, they were together, and the previous council had decided to separate the two, because healthy, healthy communities and neighborhoods were seen as sort of one whole area. So as a result of that, the healthy communities and neighborhood also has included in that parks and recreation, neighborhood housing, and healthy, and healthy communities. So it was a good decision by the previous council to kind of separate that out.
I mean, what I might say in response to that, and I guess this will be a decision for us as council to make, leaving housing alone has kind of abandoned housing, and not that we've ever abandoned it, but it has allowed its de-emphasis as a, as a priority in some ways. I think my predecessor had a view that, right, if you have housing kind of alone, then it will actually allow it to have more attention, more focus, more resources. And in some ways, that was kind of the opposite of what happened. And we've seen our efforts to have long-term housing policy discussions, while we've had them, as you know and I know, they've usually just been seen as this housing-alone thing, when really, housing relates to certainly our neighborhoods, our health planning, even parks and recreation, how we're serving different neighborhoods. And so, you know, I might, I don't know what our work product out of this is, but I might even encourage bringing them back together, because everybody, when they're thinking about buying a house or where to live, are thinking about all the things in the neighborhoods and healthy communities list. And I would argue probably the opposite for neighborhoods as to housing.
Let me just make a point. When we went through our housing policy exercise a couple of years ago, it became apparent to us that you really can't separate housing from neighborhoods, because one feeds into the other. And so our thinking is, has always been, they probably should be together. Obviously, neighborhoods are much bigger than housing, individual housing, but you can't have one without the other, and that's really the way we view it.
And let me clarify. Right now, Housing Division is within John Wood's department, and that's within the Neighborhoods Department, correct?
Yeah.
What you're talking about, I believe, is should we combine the goals of Neighborhoods and healthy communities with the housing goal? You're not suggesting a structural change in the way the department's organized?
Yeah, it's odd, actually. I would, I would kind of flip the way that we're doing things in our goals, because I'm just looking at the master list of goals. I would probably have fewer big goals for council, so I would, I would probably add housing in with Neighborhoods and healthy communities, so we can get down to maybe five goals, like public safety, planning, zoning, economic development, housing neighborhoods, transportation infrastructure, right? And then if I were reorganizing our city structure, I would probably have a separate housing department. And so that there could be that level of responsiveness in housing, and then you have your, your many neighborhoods things, because, you know, I do think sometimes housing does, and I know you all work very hard and do great work, but I think sometimes it can get lost in the big neighborhood structure. If, for example, our last year on the previous council, trash was a huge issue, right, and a very significant one, and an important one. But housing remains a big issue, too, and I think there is so much that goes through Mr. Wood's department, and then, of course, his position, that perhaps a separation could be helpful there.
So you're saying, physically, that it should be a structural change within the way we operate, and it should be that way in the goals as well?
No, I'm saying, I think we should have fewer goals, so I put houses, Neighborhoods, and healthy communities, because they all relate. However, I think in our delivery of housing-related services and independent housing- an independent housing department would help us do that more effectively.
Okay. So fewer goals, combining Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities with housing in the goals, and then having a separate housing department. Now, is that something that the council agrees with and wants to see in the plan? Or is this something that requires further discussion before?
Yeah.
Yes?
I think it requires further discussion. I can see clicking your point. But we've traditionally in this city had a problem with silos around departments. I'm afraid if you do something like that, you may create a silo between Neighborhoods and housing, where the two aren't talking. And as you pointed out, the two are actually very intricately related to each other. And so, you know, it may be a good idea to do it, but we'd have to figure out some way to avoid that kind of a consequence, because I don't think that would be healthy for us either.
Councilwoman Hall?
Thank you. I would also agree, just further discussion on what exactly the intent or the look of it would be. Because my other belief is that there's a wing of planning, zoning, and economic development in the Planning Department that needs to be intrinsically involved with housing because of the way they structure how they allow things to be built, good, bad, or otherwise. And I don't want there to be a drop-off, which I believe has been inherently in that in the last several years.
Could I call on my colleague Kitty Stephens at this point? Because before this meeting, oh.
I was going to give a little historical context real quick. At one point, housing and community development was a separate department, up until about 2004, '05. And of course, that department went away, and it was brought back probably around 2009, 2010. And 2012, I think as part of a consolidation movement, it wasn't just my area, but Housing and Neighborhood and Community Services was consolidated into one department. Again, more for the sake of efficiencies, and also because at the time, housing was somewhat of a weak sister, because it had been basically destructed and then brought back. And so housing was still developing a context. So for the last several years, we've been one department, so just background.
Okay, before you comment, and what I was going to ask Kitty to describe, was before this meeting, we said, what if the council wants to consolidate some of the goals? So we kind of addressed that. And Kitty explained why maybe that's not a good idea. She explained it a lot better than I had, but I just thought you could comment.
I'm counting on my good memory here, which I don't always have. I mean, I think there are any number of ways to do things. I think that probably getting things down to five goals is an appropriate measure. There are a couple of things to consider, and some of that has naturally come up in this conversation. A lot of these areas have overlap in multiple departments. So you will see, for instance, the Health Department is represented in many of these different goal areas. When we even get down to that more granular strategy level, we will have strategies that involve multiple departments. That's very true in planning, zoning, and economic development, Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities. And it creates challenges, but it also creates opportunities for a more integrated and holistic conversation about programs and how we achieve some of these objectives. So I guess that, but also maybe to the mayor's point, you can lose things when you put them together too much, and you can lose things when you tease them out too far. I think that maybe combining things in a way that gets us down to the five-goal-ish range is appropriate. But when we get down too far, you have so many different objectives and so many different priorities in that one area, it becomes difficult in tracking and reporting, and sort of keeping track of exactly how we are measuring the success of those areas. So, I mean, I guess I will just, that's not a great answer to make it bigger or make it smaller, but just be cautious and cognizant of those things as we're discussing consolidation versus teasing.
But, and one thing I want to suggest is, let's focus on what we need to do, the activities, the projects, the outcomes, rather than, like, departmental structure may or may not be part of that discussion. But I think if we focus on what we need to do, we can get to the how we're going to do it at a later date. That would be my recommendation. Councilman, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was actually going back, seeking of department structure, to some of my colleagues' comments about the siloing effect, which is absolutely a problem that needs to be addressed. However, I would say that housing isn't just linked to neighborhoods. It's also linked to planning and economic development as we decide on what we incentivize. Housing is a very clear role in that, transportation and infrastructure as well. And so I would say we run the risk of it being siloed no matter what, because it's already siloed off from some other very key policy-linked department issues, like economic development and transportation and health and safety. So that's what I love about this process, is that we're starting to see the nexus of all of these things, like the goals for health and safety tie into these other departments. So it sort of helps to break down that silo. So I feel like that breaking down silos deserves its own category on its own. I don't want to add any more objectives or goals, but I see the point. But I also see how housing is currently siloed off from very important other jobs that the city currently does, and that we as policymakers delve into.
Can I suggest that we, as Kitty and I work on some of the language, that we present you with two options? One would combine the Neighborhoods with the housing goal, and the other one would keep them separate. And then, as you read them both and see how that all looks together, you can decide from there. Does that sound like a reasonable option?
It sounds like the only two options we have, really, so.
No, but I mean, I mean not to reach a decision today, but to have you look at it on paper.
I understand that. I will just make one point on the thing you didn't want us to talk about, which was the Housing Department issue. I think, and while I take Councilman Fowler's point on we don't want silos, I think we are failing terribly at good housing policy and actually having, and I don't mean that as disrespect to anyone, I'm just strong in my adjective sometimes. But I just remember even in the five years I've been here, you know, we don't give John Wood the resources to actually do housing policy work. So we have to go through council, get a new ordinance, get a study group, do a market value analysis, do any number of things, just to like be able to do policy steps. And then I think our housing efforts end up being necessarily reactionary in some ways. And so it becomes that we're spending CDBG funds or anything else. And I also do this in fairness to Neighborhoods and Housing Services, the department, right? We put the Lindwood Shopping Center project in that department. We put a whole lot of things. Anytime we actually think of something, we're just throwing it there as part of probably our consolidation and efficiency movement. I get maybe where that comes from, but what that means is, when somebody's actually trying to say, I want real housing plans and housing policies, we've done so much to bring it all together, that we're giving the same department the responsibility to fix all the trash in the Northland, to get the Lindwood Shopping Center built, to get CDBG out, to do all these other things, oh, and come up with new tenants' rights policies. It's, I think, been not effective for the people of Kansas City in the slightest. And so maybe you need a little siloization, so housing, I think, gets the respect and the level that it merits.
Okay. Finance Director Tammy Queen has an important point to make here.
It's the best introduction I've ever had. Thank you very much. I would just suggest adding an objective that says, consider separation of housing into its own department. And then that way, you all could debate that as you look at the final objectives.
Thank you.
I do want to offer, and I don't know if this is a segue into what you're going to ask us to do next, but I want, I think we should think about the trends regarding Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities, regarding the wealth disparities that we have across the city. And again, from an objective point, which we haven't gotten there yet, to talk about how do we create economic mobility to be able to close the wealth gap. The other thing is, we talked about the earnings tax. The health levy is going to be coming up as well in 2021. So we need to be prepared for that, especially in light of, hopefully Medicaid expansion will pass, but we will still need the benefit of the health levy to achieve Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities. So I think we should put that vote that's coming up there as well.
All right. Thank you. Other comments? Okay, what, did you have a comment? Okay. Very good. So I've got these points. Is there anything anyone else would like to make note of as we leave the subject of Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities? All right. To what extent do you, you know, one of the things we talked about when we talked about the general trends were the eight people who responded to the survey who said they were concerned with the economic impact of COVID-19. To what extent should COVID-19 be addressed in this plan? Or should it? Is that more of a transient issue that need not be in this plan? Or I'm just wondering if, yeah.
We hope it's a more transient issue that need not be in this plan. Let's put it that way.
Well, I'm, could you say that again?
Yes, I certainly hope it's a more transient issue that we don't have to address in the long-term plan. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I would say, well, when we look back at the goals stated in the Finance and Governance, we did do a line item for issues related to COVID-19. And I think that having that fall into the Finance and Governance goal is a good idea, because not only does it encompass what our finances are going to look like, not only how we're going to spend money, but also how that's going to affect businesses in Kansas City, and how that means they're going to be paying or not paying their taxes, based on good or bad or otherwise, long-term, we don't know. I don't know where, to the mayor's point, Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities is that, and then also to Kitty's point, you said some of these departments are sprinkled in all of the goals. So with regard to the Health Department and its response to COVID-19, where does its response fall? Because it's mostly financial, does that fall with underneath the Finance and Governance goal? Then I would say you put it where we need to put it.
You know, sometimes we just have to pick one, and we just have to make some difficult choices, because there is so much intertwined together. And I'll just make another point. Mayor, the one thing that I've noticed in the 10 years that I've been here is that I have seen such an increase in interdepartmental cooperation and collaboration. There might have been silos way back, but I can tell you that the degree to which staff members consult with one another and keep that communication open is just staggering. So, anyway, we're at public safety now.
I do have a comment about the COVID response. I do think it's asking us to, you know, to use the cliche, think outside of the box. And I think as we come out of, or go into a new normal of how we address different policy issues, and whether it's telecommuting policies, or expanding restaurant space to street cafes, or to-go liquor, cocktails. I do think there may be some policy decisions that we make that are in relation to the decisions that we made during this epidemic that may change. I don't know how that fits into the trends or the goals, but I do think it's caused us to, again, think outside of the box. And we may reevaluate some of those decisions that have been made during this time and see if those are policies that we can continue in some form moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We're at public safety, so we just have about one more goal after this one. So we're doing quite well on time. And public safety, I'm just going to read these trends, violent crime rate and jail issue. And I don't think anybody would argue with those two being the trends, but for the items that are currently in our agenda on the left-hand side, who did we leave off with? So Councilman Bunch? No, let's see, I'm starting with Councilwoman Boo.
Okay, reduce crime, particularly young offenders. Is that what I'm supposed to read, or, oh, yes. Improve patient outcomes in the emergency response delivery system. Improve diversity, succession planning, and retention in KCPD and KCFT. More effective and efficient municipal court. Cease animal-related threats and increase animal welfare.
Okay. And Councilwoman, go ahead and read the survey responses as well.
Okay. Police equipment, IT technology, and motor vehicles. Staffing and competitive pay to police. Get violent crime and the murder rate under control. Attention to jail and alternate diversionary programs.
Okay. Who would like to make some comments about public safety? About what you'd like to see as an objective for the next four years? Councilwoman Hall?
We need a jail in Kansas City, Missouri. And I, when I say a jail, I don't mean just like a building with bars on it. That's not what I'm saying. I see it being an interdisciplinary building that gives people the opportunity for mental health rehabilitation areas, for rehabilitation to re-entry programs, and then, of course, a facility for those most violent offenders. I don't think it's a one-stop shop. I think it needs to be an inclusive building that allows for all the different ways for people who enter there to be able to rehabilitate in whatever the way they got there to begin with, so.
Got you.
It needs to be a structure. It can't be a one overnight thing. But at the same time, until people quit breaking the law, we have to have a place for people to go.
Okay. Councilman Ellington?
Y'all want to be extremely quick? Police can only enforce laws that are broken, right? So police cannot get violent crime and the murder rate under control. And the same when we talk about jails. Jails just warehouse people, so the criminal justice arena is top-down, bottom-up. So bottom-up law enforcement would be the first people to interact, but they're also the lowest person on the totem pole when it comes to reducing crime or creating techniques. And I said all that to go to redirecting a lot of our public safety dollars. Currently, PD eats up a majority of public safety dollars. And again, by statute, mandate, and enforcement of that institution, they can't do anything but enforce laws that are broken. So if we had more diversified programs that would utilize an evidence-based programming and procedures, job training, skills of that nature, we would see crime reduced, and that's not opinion. We can look at other states that have actually done it. I do agree with Councilwoman Hall that we actually need an efficient jail system, but jails do not reduce crime, nor does increased penalties reduce crime. And we can't expect the PD to actually get murder and crime under control, because they cannot preemptively intervene in anything. But what we can do is make sure that we have proliferation service providers that do everything from teaching de-escalation skills, which goes to conflict resolution, mental health services, that do everything from domestic violence services, to also assessing families and hooking them up with social services. And I can give you a hard example of everything that I'm saying. In the state of Washington, DC, they have a citizen, an asset of citizens returning, I'm messing up the name, but it's an office out of the mayor's office, of returning citizens. They hook up with DOC, they hook up with the state. They provide all citizens with all source documents. They also do job training, placement, et cetera. And I think that would be a good way to spend our public safety dollars. And it would be more efficient than hiring more police officers to fix, to arrest people after they broke a crime.
What I'm hearing is that, in addition to the incredible rehabilitative services provided by our municipal court, and in addition to projects such as the Kansas City Assessment and Triage Center that you all have backed, and that's, as I understand it, been very successful, you're saying we need to go a step farther.
Yeah, because the Triage Center, they do assessments and evaluations, but they're not proactive as far as assessing issues in the community, right?
Okay.
And also the amount of dollars that, just because you use the Triage Center, the amount of dollars that we spend on the Triage Center as opposed to the amount of dollars that we can spend on active social workers that are engaged in the community. In previous councils, they had functionalities with law enforcement and neighborhood associations that brought CAN centers in. The CAN centers actually allowed not only law enforcement to be there, but service providers
Okay.
to be in those same communities.
One more question for you. You said something about redirecting public safety dollars. Did you have a recommendation on?
Yeah, I have a whole bunch of them. So by statute, we have to give them 20%. We give them upwards to almost 70%. So when we talk about redirecting, uh, uh, functionable dollars, we can take upwards of that 50% that is not mandated and we can make those open in the service grants. That way, the city has oversight of the entities that actually achieving those dollars. We also have a contractual agreement with the type of services that we expect to see. So when we talk about reducing homicides, obviously those courses and those programs that have some type of element that redirects people from crime, the same when we talk about incentivizing educational incentives or mental health services, et cetera, they should have the scope of the amount of people that they can intake, the type of services that they receive. And by going into contractual basis with organizations, we can control all of that. Because upfront, they'll have to show us
Okay.
and again, we can reduce crime.
Thank you. Mayor, you are passionate about this subject.
Very much so. First, to the jail point, and I, I understand a lot about the criminal justice system and have volunteered in jails and all of that. I would, to be on point, would actually just strike jail issue from our public safety priorities. I think that we should try to get to a point where we are not actually in the jail business. Now, I know Jackson County will continue to have a jail. I, we will work with them to see what the future of the jail situation looks like, but I'm one of maybe no one or several that does not support us building a Kansas City jail just so we can have a jail and they can have a jail and everybody can have a jail. Because I don't think at any point in the history of time, have more prison beds actually reduce crime anywhere. I'm still waiting to see, but I don't, haven't caught it. And so I say actually no Kansas City jail. That doesn't mean I won't talk to the county executive and the county legislature and see how they're doing. I'm making sure they have a humane facility for very serious offenders, but I think that's one. I think somewhat related to Councilman Ellington's point, but maybe a little different, is that in almost all situations of municipal lockup, we should try to look for alternatives to incarceration. I know Councilwoman Lore, I think, has done some work on like ankle bracelets and other tracking-type things or any other level of alternatives, because I, I just think that this is a very expensive, largely ineffective long-term line item that we don't need to actually be in the business of. I'll make a further point. Councilman Ellington's taught me to read state statute more often. You know, we actually don't have to have a municipal jail even under Missouri law. We actually could, now we haven't done this yet, but we could actually just file an action that compels the county to take, to the extent we still have municipal offenders, to actually just take them in and then pay whatever figure a court would set. I actually, I would support doing that now. I don't like Kansas City in the jail business. It builds liability for us. It builds cost. It doesn't solve things. We should be looking at a thousand different ways to address at least municipal corrections issues. And let's distinguish it. Somebody who, let's say, murders somebody in Clay County, Platte County, or Jackson County, goes into their county justice system, will be at the county jail. So we're not letting them just walk around freely. I don't know why we need a jail for a number of our different municipal things that are purely municipal things. Now, I do also understand sometimes that offenses that could be charged at the state level end up getting municipal charges, but I would rather see a lot of those, let's say, domestic violence offenders actually going into the state system and us not being in the true violent crime business.
Okay. Mayor, it, four people in the survey that we administered before this meeting said, get violent crime and the murder rate under control.
True.
And I'm just wondering, to what extent does Missouri state law have an effect on what we can do and not do here in Kansas City? Does, do some of our objectives need to address what we might need to lobby for in terms of the state?
There's a, there's a realist answer, and then there's, I guess, a different one. I mean, so first, I will note, back to my jail point, because I'm going to kind of stick with that one. There is not a murder ordinance. And so, I mean, we will continue to, if you're talking about violent crime, KC Mo Municipal Ordinance Violation Jail, I don't think is actually your solution. On the broader point, there are all types of legislative priorities. I know Councilman Ellington worked on it for years, Councilman McManus. And I think every legislative session, we do try to, I think, present things that will be helpful. A lot of those is us being defensive, too, to things that would be counterproductive. And so, I mean, I don't know if you want a goal that relates to how free and able we are to carry weapons around Kansas City and Missouri. That creates a problem for us if you want goal. I mean, I could give you a whole list, but, you know, I think that's something we just kind of do every year. But yes, I mean, the lion's share of our homicides are, are gun-related homicides. They're readily available throughout our, our city and our state. You can carry them in most any manner possible. We've continued to make it even easier so crazy people in, let's say, St. Louis can brandish an AR-15 at a crowd of people. And it's wholly legal, actually, to even shoot someone if you come on the property, which is insane. But that's, now I'm just talking.
Okay.
But maybe Councilman Ellington knows.
Councilman Bunch?
Yeah. I guess I want to go to the 30,000-foot view and, and say, I, I'm curious what effort we're doing to understand and unpack why we're seeing this violent crime rate increase so dramatically. I haven't seen, I, I've heard some speculation about, you know, we need a jail and that's keeping bad guys on the streets. And I've heard, you know, I tend towards the, the, the need for trauma-informed care and access to public health and conflict resolution. But I, I, I guess, I need to understand what we're trying to accomplish. I, I think we know what we're trying to accomplish in the long run, but what is the cause of it is an important question to answer before we can really start to accomplish that long-term vision, that long-term goal of, I would say, reducing homicides to zero should be our goal. And so I see a lot of focus on, on law enforcement in the traditional sense that I haven't seen provide results. We've seen, we've gone the opposite direction on our violent crime and homicide. So I guess, understand, like, create, doing the research, understand why we're in the situation we're in. Otherwise, I feel like we're just going to have the same conversation next year and the year after that and the year after that.
Okay.
But I also see public safety here and see a lot of things missing in these challenging opportunities. You know, health is very clearly part of this conversation, and so I would want to make sure that we're, we're doing that. And then, and then, and then taking evidence-based approaches to public safety and doing more than just lip service for them. You know, putting some social workers in, in patrol offices is, is important, but, and we know that it works and we know that, that that type of effort works, however, we're not truly funding it. So I want to make sure that, that we're actually accomplishing the goal, but we have to first understand what it is that's going to get it to how. And I don't, I don't have that answer. I, I would imagine that not everyone, not anyone here really does have that answer. But, but how do we get there is a question that I think needs to be an objective.
Okay.
Well, and if I can add to that, I think it's more of recognizing the research that's already been done. We don't have to research the causality of crime and violence. And it has to do with racial economic injustice, period. And so I do agree that we have to, our, our current state of affairs of what we're dealing with has to do with racial economic injustice. Let me just make sure that I'm clear on that. And to the extent that COVID is, we're in an economic depressive state, it also is amplifying what's happening here and across other urban centers. But I think that both of my colleagues have stated this, and I just want to echo, that we have to fund strategies that address the root causes. And we also have to recognize what is going to actually move the needle. I come from the band of being not the scarcity approach. So what are the resources that are available to us that we can attract, that we can expand, that we can strengthen, so that we can adequately fund those strategies? We know that law enforcement is going to be a component of public safety. We also need to ensure that the trends based off of the civil unrest that's in the city, and I know that we talked about the episodic nature of potentially COVID, that seems, that rings true as it relates to the civil unrest. I believe COVID is something that we have to think about over the next four years. And I believe this social and civil unrest is also something that needs to be paramount and that we have to continue to think about. And so for me, public safety and law enforcement, we have to think about how are we increasing accountability and how are we increasing transparency so that we can have a healthy relationship between law enforcement, all the cogs in the wheel, the police, our municipal court, whatever jail system we have, our county court, I mean, all of those, those are extremely important so that we can make sure that we have a positive relationship and we have that transparency and that accountability for everyone who's involved.
Great, thank you so much. Councilman O'Neal?
I'm assuming this is, I mean, we're talking about goals and such, and I, and I agree with everything everybody said. My, my only concern is, is that we, we're kind of dealing with two issues here. We're dealing with, as Councilman Ellington said, police don't stop crime. They investigate it, they arrest it. That's their job. And then we have the, the issue of how do we prevent crime? And I think we're on two different tracks here in that we have to enforce, you know, violence. We have to, we have to create some kind of enforcement against it, but we also have to find ways to prevent it. And I don't think, so we're talking about two different entities. Police do this, social workers do this. We can't have social workers go to a violent situation. So I guess my, my concern is how do we do these? And I know, you know, you can take money from one and put it onto another, but it, it's hard to, to criticize, to Brandon's point, it's hard to criticize police when they're just doing their job of trying to, to find out what the, what the, why somebody got killed, and then saying, you know, we're going to take money away from that to put to preventing, which is a long-term solution. You know, I mean, we still have to deal with the current violence we're dealing with, and it's at a very high level right now.
So Councilman, you're talking about a two-pronged approach.
I, I, I guess I'm just saying, I'm not saying it can't be done together. I'm just saying we have two different issues that we're dealing with.
Well, if I could, I'd like to respond to them, because I think it's one issue. I think that's a problem. We've been looking at it contextually as it's two different things. And I use police officer as an example. So police officers typically get called to the same residence over and over and over, right? So they're getting utilized in the social service set form, but they don't have the resources of the social service officer. So we're wasting enforcement hours on people that are going out and they look like they unconcerned because they're not trained to actually adequately deal with the situation. So most of our homicides here have been twofold. You have a slight gang war, I ain't going to say slight, you have a gang war that's going between the 30s and 40s and the 50s. That's already assessed, that's already known about. Then you have a lot of domestic violence-related murders, interpersonal murders. A lot of those could have been de-escalated because some of these individuals have multiple complaints against them. So I think it's a twofold when we talk about reducing crime and enforcing. When I talk about social workers, I'm not just talking about the atypical social workers, but the actual programs that provide those gap, those stopgap services, whether that's job training, whether that's STEM services for the youth, educational services, more programming that engages the community. So when we talk about community connectors, et cetera, utilizing our, uh, uh, community centers to actually have viable programming in there. And that would play with public safety dollars, but it would also make our law enforcement more efficient because when they're going out to cause, they're only going out there to arrest, apprehend. They're not going out there for the domestic violence case that the prosecutor chooses not to prosecute, and this is the third time that they've been out there.
I hate to cut anything off, but we do have a request to speak from Councilwoman Parks Shaw.
I liked it. She shut you down.
Thank you for acknowledging. And in essence, what, to me, what's important is that we have a public health approach. And I think that will combine all the aspects that my colleagues have already stated in terms of marrying those two. And I will state that there is some early research and some success stories that has actually been put out by the National Criminal Justice, Criminal Justice Reference Service about some work that has been done in California where they are bringing the two fields together of public health and police, and, and they are bringing those together, sharing information, so that they're getting to the prevention of violence and ultimately establishing a comprehensive approach to looking at, at violent crimes. So I would like to see us marry that, that concept and then ultimately look at our public safety as, from a public health approach. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hate to push the meeting along, but we, I was wrong. We don't just have one more. We have a couple more goals to address. So if I may, could, unless there's something somebody really wants to say about public safety before we move along, then let's get into planning, zoning, and economic development. One trend was mentioned in the survey, and that is resiliency planning in cities from a social, environmental, economic, and health perspective is going to be more important. And, let's see, Councilman Barnes, would you please read, read the left side?
I will. Revitalize neighborhoods, particularly those that are historically disinvested. Increase economic well-being, inclusion and mobility. Strategically target economic development. Enhance operational efficiency and develop, and development activity. Enhance travel destinations.
Okay, so those are the areas that are currently covered in our citywide business plan. And Councilman Bunch, would you read the survey responses on the right side?
Sorry, I sent the wrong packet here. Support businesses and find employment opportunities during pandemic. Get downtown redevelopment benefits to be seen across the city. More jobs and residential growth for downtown. Better communications and resources for employment efforts. Strong energy and development policy as part of comprehensive plan. Emphasize importance of shop local KC. Expand increase, expand slash increase small business services.
So in terms of planning, zoning, and economic development, what objectives in particular would you all like to see addressed? What are your priorities in this area for the citywide business plan?
Go ahead.
So again, making sure that we're staying on track with incentive reform as it relates to economic development. And also, I'm looking at the impacts of gentrification on neighborhoods and the planning and zoning has on that. I mean, I think that those are the only two I have right now.
Okay. Other priorities for this area for planning, zoning, and economic development?
I think for me, it's trying to develop a way to specifically target development within what I call the urban core. People broadly use the term urban core, but what I'm talking about, the severely distressed census tracts.
census tracts, primarily in the, in the area of the Central City Economic Development Act. There have been a few proposed projects that are coming through there, but that's just not, it's just not enough. And it's, it's taken a lot of work and taken a lot of time to get those projects going because people aren't readily willing to, to invest in those areas. But there, there are a few of us who have been working, I know I have, for four and a half years now on, in a couple of particular areas. And hopefully by the time I'm out of here in the three years, that will happen. But it shouldn't take this long for, for that to happen.
Okay. Other comments about PZ and E?
Yeah, I'll just hop in and say, I think, I think one objective that I would like to see, and it's sort of touched on a little bit in, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, in some of these, but more specifically calling out our efforts to encourage transit-oriented development, to speak towards the-
Encourage what?
Transit-oriented development. We have a policy that we don't really seem to follow, transit-oriented development policy that I think we should really, part of it is economic ability and, and that ensuring that our housing goals, especially affordable housing goals align with our economic incentive goals, but in specifically encouraging more investment in housing and, and development and jobs along transit corridors. So really tying this, this to our transportation-related goals as well, so, but I think the transit-oriented development kind of encapsulates that really nicely.
Okay, thank you very much. Other comments? When I don't hear a lot of comments, if it's okay with you all, what I'll do is I'll talk to the depart, to the various department directors along with Kitty and find out if there are certain areas that seem to go along with this that they want to recommend to you all. But also that this whole thing is going to be refined at the department director's retreat, right Kitty?
Correct.
Okay. We are now on transportation and infrastructure. The trends, increased pushback regarding carbon neutrality, and the demand for more open space, trails, sidewalks, and bike lanes will change the way that we move around the city. So Councilman Bunch, are we, are we at your station right now?
I didn't, I didn't write this, but it sounds-
No, you didn't. But read us the, read us both sides, would you?
Oh, okay, I get to talk too much here. So transportation and infrastructure, safer, more sufficient, this is the left side, our old objectives, safer, more efficient, convenient and sustainable multimodal transportation, more sustainable environmentally sound infrastructure strategies, more strategic investment in infrastructure, increase local workforce development and minority women and locally-owned businesses.
Okay, that's what's in the plan right now, and the items on the right are from the survey.
Yes, so develop and, develop a plan to maintain our aging infrastructure, embrace urban growth with clean energy solutions, create efficiencies in public works projects, find a way to fund basic city maintenance to infrastructure, improve infrastructure, especially roads and sidewalks, vertical and horizontal, and then finally develop a climate plan.
Okay. Do any of these items look like important objectives for this particular goal, or do they trigger other ideas for objectives?
The only thing I would add, I, I think of the geo bond, if you will, and just making sure that there is good stewardship over those infrastructure dollars, and then that we're applying, again, a lens of equity as it relates to infrastructure that's going to be able to foster the change that we're seeking as it relates to the disparities across the city.
Yes, Councilwoman Hall?
Well, I would first say the number one, develop a plan to maintain our aging infrastructure, and the fourth one, find a way to fund basic, I mean, I don't know why we have to develop or find, I would think that that's something we should have already been doing all this time, and it seems like that must be the pot we end up pulling money from to go do other things when this is the most very basic reason we exist, is for basic infrastructure and keeping our city maintained well for the citizens. So I don't know why we're wondering to find or develop when, I would hope that that's something our departments are already doing. I think they are.
We can certainly not use that wording, so, thank you.
The other thing I would say is, I totally agree with creating efficiencies in our public works projects, but I, again, go back to, this is where I think the departments are probably, like you said, already working together. I would see Public Works and Water in a lot of projects we do up in the Northland, they are in, working in tandem on the same thing. So I think they're doing efficiencies or creating efficiencies that just may not be, you know, promoted, so.
May not be what?
Promoted to the people that they're actually doing those things together, because I know that a lot of them do, do efficiencies or are creating efficiencies already in certain projects, but to continue to enhance that, I think is really important.
Okay, thank you so much. Other comments, Councilman Bunch?
No, you-
I'll remember mine.
Okay, I'll probably forget mine if I, like I said with the goal, I think that the, these are, these objectives still should be a little bit higher level unless they seem very tactical and very output-focused rather than what is it that our investments in, whether it's maintenance or new things, what is it that we intend to accomplish in the long run? And so, you know, we just adopted a Vision Zero policy, saying that, you know, we need to make our streets safer, and, and, and we know that that's a problem right now, it's been in the paper about how, how traffic crashes and fatalities are up. And so I would just, I would, I would just say a general comment is, like, let's think more broadly and more strategically about, about what we're trying to do and what transportation and infrastructure, whether it's the airport or the, the transit system or a sidewalk, what do, what do those mean to us as a community? They aren't, they shouldn't be seen as goods in and of themselves. So, I don't know, I just, I think maybe these need a little bit more, a little bit more work.
Are you talking about a study?
No, I mean, I do think that we need, we don't have a transportation comprehensive plan in the same way that we have, you know, other plans that we've adopted. And I think that, so I do think that we need to answer that question about what, what does, what does this actually mean for us in the long run? What, what does it do for us as a, in our city to invest in something like a, a streetcar or an airport terminal or sidewalks? Because we're not doing it just to spend money. I mean, sometimes we, maybe we are, and that's a problem, and that's why it's so important to get these objectives right. And so I would say, an objective about safety, an objective about health, objective about racial inequality and, and unpacking that, and, and how, and how these things tie to other issues like economic development and, and housing and things of that nature, so.
Thank you. Councilman Barnes?
Yeah, I, I, I'm going back up and looking at the, the whole notion of the trends, and the second bullet point where it talks about the demand for more open space, then talking about the man for trails. And I know over the last, since I've been here five years, we've spent a lot of PIAAC money on, on developing trails and connecting, connecting trails and all of those things. And I just really wonder, simply because I'm, I'm an urban dude, I, you know, I go on, I go to the park and walk around those trails, but I've never walked, you know, the peripheral trails, and even when I've driven by, I'll take that back, the one trail that I've, that I've, I've walked was the, the trolley trail around, along, I used, I do that for my exercise, but how much increase in demand is there for, for trail systems? Because I, and I'll-
Is there someone here in the audience that would like to address that, about the demand for trails?
And I'll, I'll just be honest, when I would see that we were spending so much money on trails, and not that I'm opposed to them, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a cost versus use kind of guy. And I don't, you know, if we're going to spend, you know, over the course of the four years, if we're going to spend $30 million on trails-
Let's hear from Ralph Davis, the Director of Public Works.
You know, it's hard, sometimes it's hard to quantify, but we do see a lot of people asking for trails as part of infrastructure, and a lot of it's reflected in the complete streets. They, they want to see, they, they want to be able to walk as part of that. So the trails aren't necessarily just like out in the woods, sometimes they're alongside a major thoroughfare. We built one up on the Parkway, Choto Parkway is the example many years ago, it's got sidewalks and trails. And so people see that as a more friendly recreational opportunity where you can take your kids on a bicycle and walk and push your stroller all in the same place. So that's what we're seeing. You know, is there, is there a protest outside for more trails? No, but we're seeing, we're seeing that come up a lot in public meetings.
I guess I'm just really trying to look at cost-benefit analysis and not, not saying that trails are not needed or, just because I don't use them doesn't mean or not, doesn't mean or not.
Councilwoman Hall?
Well, I will just say a couple of things, oh, sorry, Brandon, did you want to speak first?
I don't know, because I may go down the rabbit hole, because I actually agree with Lee as far as the call savings versus the trail versus sidewalks.
Maybe we should end this right now.
Yeah. I want to know the answer to that, like, why are we doing more trails as opposed to sidewalks when more people walk down the sidewalk?
I think it, well, I'll just speak for, I mean, what we've been doing in the Northland for sure, but I would just go to right now where we are in our, in our lifestyle with COVID, and I think that the people would say, thank God for trails and, and, and the sidewalk system in Kansas City because they've finally been able to be healthy when they couldn't be healthy and walk or go to the gym, they're not going places, they're, I mean, you can't even buy a bicycle right now at Dick's if you want to, they're all sold out. So we are in a weird new system where everybody needs to be outside, and I think people are grateful for some of the trail systems we have. In the Northland, we have two, two groups, we have the Kansas City Parks group that work, but we also have the Clay County Parks Partners, and the whole goal is so that you can get from Gladstone through Kansas City, walk through the Northland, end up then to Smithville Lake, all on one system. Some are walk, so some are sidewalks, some are trails, it's a little bit of both, but the whole point is for connectivity so that eventually I can ride my bike or walk or push my stroller or whatever it is that I want to do from Smithville Lake all the way down through to Martin City. And that's what I believe people have been asking for, I believe that was part of the geo bond, we did spend some money on the complete streets and the sidewalks programs to do that. Whether you like it or don't like it, or it's interesting or not interesting, I think is a personal preference. Some citizens like it and some don't, or don't even appreciate, maybe, I wouldn't say appreciate, they just don't, it's not usable to them, they don't think about it.
And please understand me.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm talking about cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah, and I think-
Do we, do we have 20 people that will literally actually bike from Smithville to Martin City? Or do we have 2,000 people?
Well, I know Dan and Eric will.
Councilman Bunch?
Yeah.
You got a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to speak a little bit about the cost, on the, on the cost benefit and the ROI. I mean, there's a lot of trail studies in the across the country, and trails more than pay for themselves in their, in the, in the long run based on their, their return on the investment. And, but I, it's, it's more than just transportation, and I do think it's interesting that, that this is a conversation in the transportation goal. But I did want to also talk about how we're paying for most of our trails. The vast majority of the money that we're using to pay for trails is coming from federal government. We're using transportation alternatives funding, which is only, can only be used for multimodal types of enhancements like trails. And it's one of the few sources of funding that we have to pay for trails, and so when we take money out of our PIAAC budgets, it's usually to match.
Yeah.
And, and so I think it's vital for quality of life to have a, a robust trail system. And the fifth district is, is actually the, between the fifth and the sixth district, there's some really great trail systems, and I'd love to go out on a ride with you sometime. Councilman Barnes?
Um, Councilman-
But it's important for a healthy, vibrant community to have those types of amenities, both for transportation and recreation.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neal, and then we're going to wrap this up.
That's fine. I, I just, I just want to say, to Lee's point, I think we all, all 12 or 13 of us come from different backgrounds, we all have different ways we look at things, and we all have different priorities, and I think it's important that when we have these discussions, everybody kind of looks to the other experiences to come up with these conclusions because we represent Kansas City and, you know, and all of our different paths that we take. So I, I think these are great discussions because, you know, Lee's right, you're right, we're all, you know.
Everyone's right.
I'm never right, just ask my wife.
But I would, but I would also, to, to, to Councilman Ellington's point, this shouldn't be a, a, a choice between sidewalks in your neighborhood that are accessible for everyone, even, especially those with disabilities, and, which we don't have. And, and all across my district, and I'm sure in the third district and the fifth district as well, we've got sidewalks or lack of sidewalks. It shouldn't be a, a choice between building a nice trail that people can get out and ride their bike on and putting the sidewalks in. Sometimes it does, but-
Before we leave this, the Director of Parks and Rec is here, Terry Reiner. Did you have any comment about the trails that you'd like to make?
You're hating trails.
Why they walking up, Eric? I agree with you, it shouldn't be a balance in between, but I'm just going to give an example that raises flags. So they did a sidewalk off of Cleaver Boulevard, no houses there at all. So everybody in the community is like, why they do a sidewalk going from Van Brunt up to like 39th, no houses there, and then we have neighborhoods that are broken down. So I agree with you, there should be a counterbalance, but optics is everything. And it looks weird when you can do trails and you can't do sidewalks.
Okay, Director of Parks and Rec, Terry Reiner?
I'd like to thank you all for your very solid comments, and we'll take that, and no, I'm not teasing. It is, it is a delicate balance, and I actually have asked the same questions on how do we determine this connectivity that is on the big plan that the whole area has adopted through MARK, and what really makes sense? Because we do have trail segments that are not getting much use, and then we have trail segments up north, particularly some of those that go along the creeks that are almost overcrowded. So somehow, we have to determine, is it, what's, what's the purpose of the trail? And is it connectivity and who the end user is going to be, and if that really, you know, to Lee's point, is it 20 or 2,000? And I think it's different in every situation, and it's easy to chase that federal money, but I want to make sure we're doing it in a way that we know who the user is going to be, I mean, we should always know what the program is going to be before we do the activity or before we build something, right? So that's all I would-
Great, thank you so much, Terry.
And Ellen, why would you call me? I was saying-
Oh, it's just that power thing, you know? Okay, no, not really. I would like to turn the program to the mayor at this point. We have two final, or we have a final question that I'll let him direct the conversation about how you all would like to receive updates on the plan and on the plan's progress once it's adopted. Before I do, I just want to tell you all how wonderful it's been to work with you, and you make me proud of being a Kansas Cityan and particularly a Kansas City employee. I want to give a special thanks to Kitty Stephens, who, from the Office of Management and Budget, who orchestrated this whole thing, and you cannot believe the incredible role she played in making this happen. So thank you, Kitty. And now, Mayor, I'll turn this last part over to you.
Thank you so much for both of you, and thank you, Ms. Stephens, for getting this arranged. We're a hard group to pin down, particularly during a pandemic. I would think that this is the sort of thing that's probably appropriate to come back. So our deadline for suggestions regarding our values, vision, and mission statements is July 31. After July 31, do you all go back? So I'll ask you, Ellen, do you all kind of go back and then compile it all and create something for us and then report back to us from there?
We'd, we'd love to.
Yeah, so, so our, our next steps that we have are getting some community input, we have our director's retreat on July 31, where we're going to be talking about some of the- have our director's retreat on July 31, where we're going to be talking about some of the things at the, you know, more granular level. So any of those things that you have, we will then take that time through the end of the summer to work things into that framework. Yeah. And so at, at any point in that process, we can come interface with you all to see if we're on the right track or to give you some sort of
Oh, you mean her earlier.
Got it. Understood. And I think Ms. Queen's probably directing us back to the original calendar or something of that sort. So I would almost think that there is, if we just follow that plan, and then you'll come back to a business session at whatever relevant point, then that works for us. Right. Okay.
Some business session between the 31st and the 17th?
I, unless you all, council, want to meet even more on this, I'm, I'm content with waiting for your business session presentation on September 17, when we can make modifications, I'd assume, if we were so inclined to what business plan you've put together. Anyone have a desire to meet even earlier with the business, with the business plan team?
Yeah. Gives us more time.
Yeah, that's great to give us more time. This is because we're going to do a lot of consulting with a lot of department.
Understood. All right. Well, we'll plan to just go with this schedule at issue, although I might encourage you to bump back the adoption one week more. I see you're doing committee presentations on the 23rd of October. Just a lot of things tend to come up in committee. And so, like I remember, KCI came up as one of our business plan things back in 2015. And we had a fun time figuring that out in about a week. And so if we could probably have adoption a week to two weeks later.
We, we can't adopt later because we're, we're obligated to adopt by the first. So these dates sort of represent
That's by ordinance or?
Our drop dead, yes.
By charter?
Charter.
We, we put the business plan in the charter.
Yeah.
Good for us. Well, then I would have your committee presentations be earlier. I, I do want to give probably at least two weeks, at least two weeks for presentation to adoption.
The, the other question was, in general, once we have adopted, adopted the plan, how would you all like to receive information on how it's going?
Receive information about what?
How it's going? How, how the plan's going, how the progress?
I would like the mayor to do a PowerPoint.
I think you should be delegated to Dr. Archer.
Oh, my gosh.
I, I would just say, I mean, where you feel, I mean, September 17 is kind of our trigger date and we'll have a good presentation.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And so you'll give us information there. And then what other information will you have to add to us?
Well, no, I mean, just, but, but once we have it all planned out and we've adopted the plan, just in, in, along the next four years, just as a, as a matter of process, we would like to be able to come to you all and say, hey, here's where we are on some of these things. Here's where the needle is moving here, what some of the metrics are showing. We could do that in committee. We could do that in business session. We could do that on a very regular basis, on a quarterly basis.
So you should probably, are we still doing the, in the budget presentations, when you come to committee or when you came to committee, you, you, we do talk about adherence to the business plan as well. So you'll, so finance department will come, will present. This is our, kind of our plan, how we're aligning with our long-term business plan goals. So that, that happens with the budget process, I know.
We could do, you know, just smaller presentations, just about a particular goal.
Sure.
You know, that are shorter, but a little bit more regular. So you're getting it more than once a year.
That's even more reason for fewer goals because I would probably be willing to say that if we did a business session and had a business session on transportation infrastructure, for example, and a separate business session on whatever other issue that works. For now, let's plan to do those at least once per year, just the
For each goal once a year?
Right, for each goal.
Okay. In business session?
And if we want to add more to that, then, if we want to add more to that, I would be inclined to have it done in the committee process. And, and I'll leave it to committee chairs or the committee members to ask for more on, say, transportation and infrastructure, how are we doing in alignment with our goals.
Okay.
I would just offer one additional suggestion. I like the committee structure, just to make sure that we're not just doing it, you know, annually. But then also when we're thinking about the resident satisfaction survey, I know we can't, it doesn't align with that completely. But if there are areas where it aligns with, when we get those updates regarding satisfaction from the public, that would be helpful to get, just make sure everything's in alignment.
Absolutely. There are several of the measures of success, many of them actually, that come, that are in the plan that come from the resident survey. But we can certainly coordinate with data KC so that we're doing some of those things together, that there's a comprehensive look at all of it.
One of the recommendations, just for tracking purposes, that we ask for data KC when they do that, is to make sure that the departments come, if we're falling behind the curve as it relates to those satisfaction surveys, that those departments are presenting as to how they're going to improve. Since we don't have a schedule of continuous feedback, if you will, we don't have the KC stat or that type of thing. So I just will offer that that's one opportunity for us to, to do the business plan, the satisfaction survey, and then address deficiencies and improvement areas and not wait to budget session to do all that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So I believe we do have lunches available for folks in the, in the back room here. So please help yourselves. And again, thank you for taking the time to work over your lunch hour.
Thank you.